Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council this evening. Tonight, we are in committee meeting. It is on and/or around 7:01 PM on a Monday evening, March 25th, 2019. We will begin this evening with the Committee of the Whole meeting. And if I can kindly remind people that as you're sharing or speaking at the podium, please sign in. That helps us with documentation and assists our clerk as well. Our first presentation this evening for Committee of the Whole is a Fair Housing presentation from HAPCAP. So this evening, we have Mr. Shawn Brooks and Nathan Simons presenting. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. All righty. Hello all. Thanks for your time. Thanks for having us. My name is Nathan Simons, and I'm the Community Development Coordinator for Hawking, Athens, Perry Community Action. And over here is Shawn Brooks. He is Community Development Manager for HAPCAP. So we are happy to be here this evening on behalf, actually, of the City of Athens. HAPCAP was fortunate enough to propose to offer our services, our Fair Housing Services, as a Fair Housing Consortium, to add the City of Athens. Typically, we do the Fair Housing Program for Athens County, Hawking County, and Perry County. But we do such a good job for them. The City of Athens wanted us to get involved here for the city, and we're very pleased to be doing so. And so this is our first foray into helping the City of Athens with their Fair Housing Program, but we're very pleased to be here. And we will try to keep things brief. We know you guys got a lot going on, and we'll try not to take up too much of your time. So a little explanation of kind of why we're here and how it all ties into what we do in community development. So we administer the Community Development Block Grants for Athens, Hawking, and Perry Counties. And then with that comes the Fair Housing part of the program. And all of this money in the Community Development Block Grant Program comes from HUD. It's all federal money, comes from federal government, and then they distribute it down to the states. And then each state doles it out to the counties. And HUD likes the administrators of Community Development Block Grants to also administer their Fair Housing Program. So they bundle it all together, and we administer the Fair Housing and the Community Development Block Grants. And so the City of Athens, of course, has its own Community Development Block Grant Program that is administered very capably by Patricia Whitmer. But they wanted some help with their Fair Housing, so we're happy to be here. And so that's kind of why we're here and what we do. And so I will turn it over now to Mr. Brooks to give you a bit of a rundown on some specifics of the Fair Housing Program and the services that we provide with our Fair Housing Consortium, the Hawking, Athens, Perry Community Action. Thank you so much.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to start off, I'm going to read you the Federal Fair Housing Act and what it says. It says that it prohibits discrimination in housing because of race or color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, including children under the age of 18 living with parents or legal custodians, and pregnant women or people securing custody of children under 18, and disability. The Ohio Fair Housing Law includes ancestry and military status as additional protected groups. Many local governments also have Fair Housing laws that include additional protected groups. And I know the City of Athens has a few of those. Discrimination includes not only denial of dwelling of units, but also withholding or misrepresenting information about the available housing, steering, setting higher standards of credit worthiness for minorities, quoting different prices, terms, or conditions for financing, insurance, or sale. Any kind of differential treatment based upon home seekers' protected group is prohibited. In some instances, actions which have a discriminatory impact or effect may also violate the law. I would like to point out to you all that there are more than 10,000 housing discrimination complaints filed annually across the nation. Forty percent of those allege racial discrimination, and the same percent alleged discrimination against persons with disabilities. So racial discrimination and persons with disability discrimination make up 80% of the total complaints. Complaintants most often allege discrimination in the terms and conditions of sale or rental of housing, refusal to rent, equal access to housing insurance and lending, and other, obviously, other discriminatory practices. The federal Fair Housing Law prohibits discriminatory practices, and there are a few limited exceptions under the federal law. No one may take the following actions based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, or disability. They may not refuse to sell or rent housing, refuse to negotiate for housing, make housing unavailable, deny a dwelling, set different terms, conditions, or privileges for sale or rental of a dwelling, provide different housing services or facilities, falsely deny that housing is available for inspection, sale, or rental when in truth it is available, profit, persuade, or attempt to influence owners to sell or rent to them to block someone from renting the property, or to deny access or membership in a facility or service related to the sale or rental of housing, including brokerage and multiple listing services. The Ohio Fair Housing Law, which I'll read to you now, and this should wrap it up for you, gives all persons in the protected classes the right to live wherever they can afford to buy a home or rent an apartment. It is unlawful on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, ancestry, military status, disability, or familial status to refuse to rent, sell, or finance, or insure a home or accommodations in residential property, represent to any person that housing accommodations are not available for inspection, sale, or lease, refuse to lend money for the purchase of, construction of, repair to, or rehabilitation of, or maintenance of housing accommodations or rental property, discriminate against any person in the purchase, renewal, or terms and conditions of fire extended coverage or homeowner or renter's insurance, refuse to consider without prejudice the combined income of both spouses, to print, publish, or circulate any statement or advertisement which would indicate a preference or limitation, and to deny any person membership in any multiple listing services or real estate broker's organization. Okay. So that's a covering of the laws. And if you feel like perhaps you have ever had any instance where any of these might have applied to you or someone that you know, there is a process that you can follow to report that or to maybe inquire further about it and to see whether it would fall into a Fair Housing Law area or a Tenant-Landlord Law area. Essentially, what HAPCAP would do is we would take your call, and we do have a 1-800 number available for this. We would listen to what you've had to deal with, whatever it may be, and then determine whether it would be something that would actually fall into the Fair Housing Guidelines or would it be landlord-tenant law. If it's landlord-tenant law, there are some resources that we could direct you to outside of Fair Housing. It may still be a violation of some sort of law. It may not be a Fair Housing violation, but it could definitely be a housing violation in some other way. So it's good to find out. Even if you're not sure, you could call our office. We would review what you've had to deal with and then help you find the resources that may match best with your complaint or your problem at that time. So that's what we're here to do, and that's what we're here tonight to present to you folks. And that basically wraps it up for me. Does anybody have any questions for us? Nathan and I would be happy to try to answer questions if anybody has anything.
Thank you. Yes, we have a few from council. And while you're at the podium, if you're also able to share maybe with the public at large in TV and internet world, the phone numbers you referenced, both your offices as well, maybe the 800 number too.
Sure. Our local office is 740-767-4500. And I apologize, you don't have the 1-800 number in front of me, but I would be glad to provide it to council.
Thank you. Councilmember.
I had two questions. The first is whether this applies to every renter in Athens regardless of the number of units or houses or whatever. And the second question would apply. I'm just curious if you have a situation where landlord rents to a number of tenants, and one of those tenants who supplied is of a different sex, do they have the absolute right to rent that unit if the other members would prefer somebody of the same sex?
Okay. So let me try to break it down into two parts as it's two questions. And answer the question. One would be if you have less than four units and you've made the renter aware that you have under four rental units, you can specify then to some extent that there are some stipulations there. And as for the second part, I'm not certain on that. I think that would fall more into a legal realm of things, and unfortunately, that's not my area of expertise.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions from councilmembers? Yes, councilmember.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the presentation tonight. I guess my question is, what is the amount? I guess there's an amount that the city pays to have this service. So what is that? I guess what's that amount? And then also, this might be to administration, and we may not have the answer tonight, but how is this information then conveyed through to the citizens of Athens?
Sure. And if you wouldn't mind, if it's all right with you, I would like to pass it off to Nathan. He would be much more versed in explaining the financing part of what the city pays.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simons.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, so as part of the grant agreement, the City of Athens has received a grant from Ohio Development Services Agencies, a Community Development Block Grant, and part of those funds are earmarked for the administration of their Fair Housing Program. So the funds that the city is providing for the services is coming from grant funds from their DSA, and I believe it was $3,700 for the year. And that will include, so all the services that the city will get, as we will be out and about here. We just ordered some nice new shiny flashy materials, Fair Housing Materials, brochures, and posters that we will be going around the city and getting up and out and about here in April, actually, which is Fair Housing Month, coincidentally. So it's a good time to get out and get that going. So we'll have that out and about, and that is, of course, how folks can find us and access the information and the services that we will provide to the residents of Athens. So we'll have flyers, we'll have brochures, and those will be distributed at various locations across the city that the city has, you know, the location is determined by the city is where we will place those. Patricia has provided us with the list. And then, of course, we have to do a number of these information sessions. We don't really like to call them a training because we keep them quick and, you know, kind of informal, but are happy to offer or answer questions and offer suggestions. Yeah. Any other, I guess, questions in that regard? Does that answer the question?
It does, for me, yes. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Just one more question.
No, no problem. As many as need.
Prior to this, what agency in Athens did this kind of job? And do you know just offhand how many instances were reported?
Okay. Well, you know, so I can't remember the name of the gentleman who, our predecessor, but I know he was, he has been serving the City of Athens for several grants, cycle several years. And yeah, and I'm not, I can't really speak to his efforts or what he did or the kind of program that he offered. I do know that Patricia was wanting more from the program, which is why we're here. Yeah.
I think, thank you. To answer Councilmember McGee's question, the clerk informed me that it was Don Eager and Associates that provided that.
There you go. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
There are not a lot of valid Fair Housing complaints in the City of Athens. Don Eager previously had looked into ones from time to time. In all cases, if there is one, you know, they will take that determination whether or not it's under Fair Housing or under landlord-tenant law, and then will refer the person as needed to their correct agency to deal with it. They're kind of a advice/initial investigatory agency. If it's a Fair Housing thing, I'm assuming it's law enforcement in some cases. But that's just, it just is rare that there would actually be a Fair Housing violation in almost all instances. At least the feedback that we got when we were looking into this, it was, in most cases, landlord-tenant law violations if there was one.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
And if I may say, that is what we generally find in the counties that we serve. We might have one actual discrimination-based case per year. So very few, yeah.
Thank you. If there's no further questions or comments?
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time. We're pleased to be here, and we look forward to seeing you again. Thanks so much.
Moving on to our next point of discussion this evening for the Committee of the Whole, we have a discussion regarding the municipal refuse and recycling contract update. And I believe the administration was going to share with us some thoughts and talking points on this. My understanding is that we need to begin the process of looking for acceptable bids. Thank you.
Everybody want to talk about it beforehand?
Okay. Did you want? Well, I'll just say that, yeah, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Stone, that the refuse and recycling services, his staff has been looking at the request bids. I believe in early April, those will be requested, and by the end of April, early May, then an award will be issued. And it will have evaluation criteria on technical aspects of the program, sustainability aspects of the program, and as well as education and outreach, I believe similar to the past. But I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Stone.
Right. So for the first time in a long time, at least certainly as long as I've been here and well before that, I think, at least with my history or what I know about the city, three years ago, we did our first request for proposals for solid waste services in the city. And the reason we did that was a couple-fold, but the main reason was the separation of the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District as a government entity into a nonprofit initiative. And ultimately, it turned into Athens-Hawking Recycling Center, which has our contract for the last three years of our solid waste. And that's managing our garbage, your standard garbage, as well as recycling, and then the program that this body authorized, the pilot program in curbside composting. They have all three of those programs. As a nonprofit corporation, they have to compete just like any other corporation. We can't sole-source that activity to them as we could when they were a governmental entity. So three years ago, we went through the first RFP that we've done in a long time, and they were the successful bidder. We learned quite a few things over that process, and we've refined and created a new, ultimately, we're calling it Request for Bids, because at the end of the day, that's what it is. They're bidding on doing our solid waste services. And they, and that will go back on the street, and then we will, Athens-Hawking Recycling Center, I'm sure, will compete again, but also other private haulers that are compliant with our solid waste laws in Title 5.02, and then our recycling laws in 5.06, they will also be able to compete if they like. And the bid they submit will be the basis for what we will pay for trash collection and recycling collection, and then should we choose to continue the composting program as well, the curbside composting program as well, that will pay. So ultimately, what I see happening, and we don't have to do legislation to advertise, but we will have to do legislation to have council allow me to accept a bid, as well as an authorization of the expenditure. Now, we've put our appropriations for solid waste into our annual budget, and that's a standard practice. We put that in there. But we'll have to authorize it because it'll be a multi-year contract that will enter into, a three-year contract. And so you'll end up authorizing all three years, and then annually, we'll put those appropriations. So we won't ask for an appropriation, but we will ask for that authorization. So that will be the piece of legislation going forward. I think that we've done a, you know, not to pat my staff on their back, but I will. Ron Lucas has done a tremendous amount of work, learning from the last time we did this, and then learning from administering the program and crafting our request for bids accordingly. So number one, we get competitive prices. And number two, we get a service that is to the standards that the City of Athens expects, both in promptness and cleanliness, as well as recycling, and, you know, it's a level of service that our citizens demand. It's my expectation that we'll see prices go. I mean, and I think what's really driving that is the floor has, and I think if you follow solid waste and municipal solid waste management in general, the floor has fallen out of the bottom of the recycling market worldwide. And, you know, there are a lot of global forces involved here, but I think in most cases, it has been, you know, China not taking recyclables, and so, and they're not being industrial-based to be able to take that much recyclables in the United States. So my concern is that, and it is what it is, we will see an increase in our costs when these bids come in. But like I said, we're writing it such that we, hopefully, it's competitive, that, you know, the bidder sharpen their pencils. But the other piece of legislation that will come to you later in the year, probably after council goes on recess and comes back in in the fall, would be anything related to rates. If you remember, we looked at a variety of rate legislation and fee legislation at the end of last year. We decided to wait on trash because, or solid waste, because we didn't know what our new bids would look like. So we will do a projection, not unlike we do the projections for the water fund or the sewer fund, looking at debt and operations and costs per year over a 10-, 20-year period. We'll do the same thing with the cash on hand and a three- to five-year period for solid waste, so that you have those numbers when the time comes to look at rates. If you have any questions, I can speak to them. I will provide the request for bids to council. We were still tweaking the final aspects of it after some extensive review with the law director to make sure that we're doing it correctly. But when you look at the evaluation criteria, one half of the evaluation criteria is price, the other half of the evaluation criteria is services. That's what makes this kind of bid unique compared to a construction project where really it's lowest bid, as long as they can do it. In this case, it's lowest and best bid, and the best part of the bid is how well they demonstrate that they're going to be able to handle the various services.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. I appreciate that. Before I offer questions or comments, I do want to apologize to Councilmember Crowell. I wasn't aware that you'd been doing your homework on this.
No problem.
Is there anything else, too, that you want to share with us before we proceed?
No, thank you.
Questions?
I had two questions for you, Mr. Stone. The first was, three years ago, how many bids were there? And then the second question is, it seems to me, at least from what I've been seeing on the internet, there's kind of a real issue as to whether we should be doing this multi-mixed recycling or whether we should be doing, going back to the old ways of separate-use recycling for purposes, basically cutting down on the cost. And I just wondered whether that's even something that you know whether your office and whether the, is being considered as an option, since I know three years ago, we decided to buy these large containers for just a complete recycling. But overall, it appears that that is having some problems with the economics.
Sure. So I'll take your first question first. The first question was, three years ago, we had two bids. So one of the private haulers that is registered in the city, and then Athens-Hawking Recycling Center were the two that bid. Athens-Hawking Recycling Center was the lowest, was the lowest bid, and ultimately, that's who we ended up going with. As for the single stream versus mixed recycling, you know, for a number of years now, the two counties, and I am not as smart on this as my mayor is because he's a member of the board for the Solid Waste District, and there are people that are smarter about this than me. But the two counties have been under kind of a directive from the Ohio EPA to say, you will recycle more of your, and you will divert more of your waste from the landfill. And you can either figure out how to do it on your own, or you can have us write a plan for you and tell you how you're going to do it. And all of the communities locally have, you know, worked hard to try to do that, and the gold standard for diverting from the landfill was single stream. And so that was the catalyst for that switching away from separating and going to the single-stream process. Now, in intervening years, we've had some significant global changes where there are part of that single stream that gets sucked out of the mass of recyclables that you send and goes to landfill anyway. I know that Athens-Hawking Recycling Center specifically worked hard to create a separating center locally so that they could manage that. I don't know where the separating centers are for some of the other haulers. I think that a couple of the other haulers that operate in Athens, there might be one in like one county over, but we've not looked at going back to separating. You know, certainly, if that's the will of this body, you know, we can look at going back to separating, but I think that we tried so hard for so long to get away from separating and go to single stream that in order to get people to recycle more, that, you know, it's not something direction we want to go. Of course, we can always reject all the bids if the prices are just completely out of line and say, hey, we need to go back to something different.
Thank you.
What are the services that were, what are the items that are being removed from the recycling and taken to landfill now? Is it primarily glass?
I don't, I know there are types of plastic. There might be somebody smarter than me on particular waste products that could speak to that.
Thank you. Mr. Underwood, if you would like to present or talk or answer questions, that might be helpful, too. So thank you for being here this evening, and thank you. And if you, again, could sign in and state your name for the record, thank you. And your title, that will be helpful. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Underwood. I am Executive Director at Athens-Hawking Recycling Center. I'll just make a couple of comments of what Mr. Stone had said. So yeah, there's been some significant downturns in the recycling industry globally and nationally. So we've, you know, we've worked really hard to get that single-stream facility up and running, which became operational January 2016. So invested a lot of time and resources, a lot of community discussion that went into that to create that facility. Some of the pros of that, and as Mr. Stone had mentioned, you know, the EPA has been really pushing this, and there are some pros to it, and there's some cons to it. One of the biggest advantages to it has been the increase in diversion in our district. So last year, in reference here, 2017, so we're a year behind, we're at 24.73% diversion. The state goal was 25. So we're inching towards that, and that's up significantly from back in 2008, 2009, when the diversion rate was less than 9%. So there's a lot of advantage at the single stream, mostly being because more people participate. It just makes it a lot easier for the consumer. That was sort of the thinking behind those, the carts that we got with the grant with the recycling partnership that the city had received. So in large part, I think it's been really beneficial to the community, not just the City of Athens, but the surrounding communities as well. Some of the disadvantages are to the single stream is some of those things, Mr. Stone had talked about, things going directly to the landfill, is typically people put things in there they shouldn't have, and that's part of our, you know, ongoing efforts to sort of educate the community of what's supposed to go in there to begin with. But all in all, you know, we've almost doubled our throughput at the processing center there and created a lot of jobs along the way, so really keeping all of that local. So I feel that's really important, and we're trying really hard to maintain the system we have with all the struggles and the global industry, you know, all these downfalls with overseas operations not taking our material from the United States, specifically China. So it's been really difficult and driven the values of the materials down, but we're working away rounds and working really hard with infrastructure and organizations here domestically in the United States to keep going what we have.
Thank you. Councilmember McGee.
Two questions. One is, when you talk about one of the problems, the international problems, my understanding is a lot of that is contamination, and that's surely increased by a single-stream process as you're dumping things in, would be one thought that I would have. And then the second thing is, I'm not quite sure I understand what you mean when you say increase in diversion. When you're talking about diversion, do you mean? When you're talking about diversion, do you mean what's being picked up or what's being ultimately recycled as opposed to what's just arriving at your center?
So yeah, to answer the first question, so single stream processing like we do here locally is more, there is a higher contamination rate as compared to a source separated system. Back in the old system, we had to separate everything out into the categories. That's just sort of the, the nature of the beast with that. And to your second question, you know, we're, with the diversion, it's of all the solid waste that we produce in Athens and Hockings County, which is that, that solid waste district. So that number, the recycling number divided by that total. So that's what creates our diversion rate.
I'm not sure whether you understand, when you're defining diversion, okay, is that from what you pick up at the curb and is brought to the recycling center or is it what is actually recycled? That's my question.
So the diversion rate is not calculated by what we pick up directly, it's all the activities in the district. Look at all the recycling that's collected as compared to not sent to the landfill. So maybe you're thinking more towards our recovery rate, which is of all the recycling that comes to our facility, what is the percentage of that that gets recycled?
Yeah.
So that's a different number than the diversion rate.
Okay. And where are we on that now?
Of all the material that we get at the recycling center, about 91 and a half percent is, is what's recovered. So approximately eight and a half to nine percent, just depending on the month, that's sort of a long, you know, long-term average. But of all that material, about 91 and a half percent gets recovered. And of that remainder of what actually goes to the landfill is determined by a lot of things, in part by what consumers put in their bin. So that goes back to that education piece of what you should put in to begin, to begin with.
So, so in layman's terms, diversion is acknowledging that stuff that used to go to the landfill is now being recycled?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Constance?
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Underwood, thank you for coming tonight. You can, you can tell when it comes to trash and recycling, we're about, just about, we know about enough to be dangerous and that's about it. So and what I want to just kind of, just, just kind of repeat it. So it sounds like with, with a single stream and having the MRF to, to, to sort and recycle all of this, 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 this used product out, at the end of the day, the recycling has actually doubled from, from 2008, 2009? Is that correct?
It's approximately double of what we processed.
Okay.
So we get sources of material that are outside of the district as well. So the idea behind the facility, the MRF or the materials recovery facility was to kind of be a regional hub. So our, our numbers have gone way up because there's been greater, greater participation in the district itself, but also we've also sort of processing materials from other districts and actually other states as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Crowell, thank you.
Thank you. I know that part of the evaluation process is on your education and outreach and I think that the Athens Hocking Recycling Centers does a good job there. In, in that vein, some of these products, because as Mr. Stone said, is changing regularly, some of these products that are no longer recyclable are film plastic, right? So plastic bags, I'm assuming you probably still see a lot of plastic bags, even though we're all trying to remove those from the recycling. And I think also the higher number of pla, I mean, we see a lot of plastics now that are compostable plastics, but I think those are also a contamination for your plastic? Is that correct?
That is correct. So plant-based plastics are a contamination for petroleum-based plastics. And that whole plastics in general, including the film plastics, just adds to the confusion for the public and that's the difficulty in the educational pieces. There's just so many types of plastic and you know, our buyers to ultimately to get something recycled, someone wants to, has to buy it and make it into something else. So that's something we have to keep in mind as we, as we go forth, like, can we take that plastic bag or that pot bottle and make it into something else? Does it have value to that extent? So film plastics were one difficult one, which we had to exclude because essentially there were no markets for that material, at least anywhere close without having to ship it, you know, too far. So, you know, we're working hard to keep the materials list we have now going, you know, working with our brokers and our partners there, but that's something that's definitely changing ongoing.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but as we all sit at home and look at something and try to figure out, does this go in recycling or not? I believe the slogan you are suggesting now is if in doubt, leave it out of the recycling. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. If in doubt, just don't put it in there, you know, call the recycling center, we're happy to answer those questions. The solid waste district is a good resource, so call, call the coordinator's office there. So there's a lot of other resources out there to help determine what should go in there to begin with.
And I think there's also good information online on your website as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Online, on our Facebook page and our Twitter page, we try to put out updates as much as possible and, and work with other community partners to get that word out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Yes, Councilmember Reisner followed by Councilmember McGee.
Even though you're finding markets to take our recyclables and then have someone else do something with them, are we, are we making any, anything close to a profit or are we barely breaking even or are we taking a loss right now?
I guess, do you want me to speak to the recycling industry as a whole or us specifically?
I mean, well, us, because it's coming, the money's coming from my pocket.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at it a couple of different ways. It's still going to be more expensive to throw it away. So if you look at it in those terms, so even though recycling costs may go up in this particular area or for a particular material, to keep in the bigger picture, that it's still going to be more expensive to just throw all this material away. You know, as for terms of profit, you know, it's not, it's not a very profitable thing to just to do recycling, especially in the, in the last, you know, 12 to 18 months, it's been very difficult. But we're adjusting to that and, you know, we'll have to adjust our rates to make sure that, that's sustainable going forward.
So we are losing money on it.
Mr. Stone?
I mean, to his point, there's tipping fees at the landfill. And if, if we just said, you know what, thanks but no thanks, we're sending all the landfill, the citizens' trash rates would be higher than if they were recycling. Am I correct in saying that?
I would agree with that statement, yes.
Thank you. And thank you. And last question?
I just wanted to go back to that figure you had given me because it seems out of proportion for what I've been reading as far as national figures. You had indicated we have about a 90-some percent recycling rate and seems nationally it's dropped down because of contamination issues in China not buying stuff and it's somewhere around 20%. So I'm concerned about that discrepancy, but first I'd like to thank you for being here and also say, I think you do a wonderful job. I toured your facilities. I know it's a hard thing, man. My only concern is whether, again, single stream or the mixed stream is, is better for the recycling. So, so the question again is, are you telling us the rate for Athens in this area is really 90-some percent is actually still getting recycled?
I want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. So there's the diversion rate, so that's all the material we divert, and then there's the recovery rate.
Right.
And then there's a participation rate. So there's three different things. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. Our recovery rate is much higher because we're at a much smaller scale than a lot of other facilities across the state or even across the nation. So, you know, we processed around 6,000 tons last year. You know, some of these other facilities are processing tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of tons. So because of our scale's a little bit smaller and we're a nonprofit, it's our mission to try to divert as many materials as possible. We can operate a little bit differently, run our machinery a little bit slower to make sure we get that higher recovery rate.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining that. It's very helpful. Thank you. Any other further comments from the administration?
I didn't ask Bruce Underwood. And it really helped the discussion because otherwise I would have been able to speak nearly smartly about the topic.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Thank you.
Before, before we move on, I do want to clarify with the administration, my understanding is that we will need to accept bids by early to mid-May, which then means we'll have to move quickly as a council, perhaps minimizing the number of reads.
Yeah.
Are you talking special session?
Yeah, maybe a special session in there in order to get it, you know, the, the contract goes through, I think 30 June right now, 30 June or 31 July, I think. So I'd like to, is it 30 June? Okay. I, you know, I want, I'd like to not have to, now, we always have the option of going and extending the contract to one in order to just allow us to really be, you know, that would be a negotiation between us and Athens Hocking Recycling Center if we had to in order to really evaluate what we get in. Or if, like I mentioned earlier, if we decide, you know, we're not going to accept any bid and we're going to reject them all and rebid, then in that case, it turns into a negotiation to say, okay, we need three more months under our current terms or some modification of our current terms and then, and then at that point, we can go and do it again. But, but if it, if everything happens, great. I, we'll look at the agenda with the goal of having three full readings, but it may be that you would do a special session.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. That concludes our committee of the whole. And again, I wanted to acknowledge that President Nysley is our current acting mayor and I have been sitting in as president pro tem this evening. We will move forward with City and Safety Services Committee, which will be chaired by myself, and that committee also includes Councilmember Fall and Councilmember Grace. So our chief of police is here this evening, Chief Pyle is here and as well as, as we know, his boss, Mr. Stone. So you are free to share an update with, with us this evening. This initially was discussed with council, I believe, back in February of 2018, and so this is an update and more information. Thank you.
Right. So I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Chief Pyle to continue and to get into the, to the details. For a couple of years now, both this body and the administration has looked at body worn cameras. Body worn cameras have turned into a kind of a hot topic nationwide in law enforcement and, you know, we looked at it from the standpoint, a variety of standpoints, the pluses and minuses of, of using them. And some of the concerns in the beginning, or in fact, the major concern in the beginning was the generation of public records and how do you manage the absolute terabytes of data that, that occur when you're, when you're, when you're filming all the time from times X number of police officers and comply with public record laws? And so at the beginning, communities were going in a couple of different directions on, on how to do that and to include buying their own servers in order to manage that data. And it seems as though as the, the, as the industry and the, and the service has, has matured, there's a little bit more of a, a process that's in place and some other communities have, have, have kind of did the hard work of figuring it out. And we're in a place now where we think we have a valid approach to it. And so we're going to seek legislation to authorize us to enter into a program. We've already appropriated the money as part of the annual budget, but we're going to seek legislation authorizing us to enter into a five-year contract and then we'll stick the money to, to, to perform it into our budget every year. So that's the piece of legislation that we're going to seek from you. And with that, oh, of note, before I turn it over to Chief Pyle, we've had some discussion about whether or not this has to be bid or if you can sole source this. And so we've communicated extensively with Law Director Eliason about sole sourcing because of some software elements as well as some other equipment that the body worn cameras interact with that we already have and is part of our system, that going with a different company would, 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 would cause those interoperability issues. And so under Ohio law, she feels comfortable that we can, we can follow Ohio law by sole sourcing this particular service ultimately, this both products and services. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Pyle. He can talk about the specific program that we're looking to enter into.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We've requested and received a quote from Axon Technologies, which is formerly known as TASER International. They're an industry leader in both TASER, which are electrical impulse devices that are used commonly by law enforcement, and now body worn cameras. I specifically sought out Axon because we are a TASER agency. We have deployed 21 TASERS over the years. We have 21 staff that carry TASERS every day on the job in the field. And we were looking at something that, that would work interactively with the TASER systems. We're also looking for cloud technology, which Axon provides, which would keep us from having to, to invest and maintain more infrastructure and IT. And then I think probably one of the biggest factors for me in pursuing a quote from Axon was the fact that a lot of our peer agencies in, in the Southeastern Ohio area, the ones that have body worn cameras are using Axon. For instance, Logan Police Department is an Axon agency, Lancaster Police Department is an Axon, Axon agency, Chillicothe Police Department, and to name a few. And I've actually spoken with all those chiefs over the last two years about how their programs have been implemented, how they have weathered public records requests and have they realized the increase in personnel hours and managing, you know, have they encountered difficulties in managing the systems? And they're all very happy with the Axon product and, and have reported to T that they just haven't experienced public records issues that we have had concerns with over the last over years. And then of course, on the legislative side, a lot of things have calmed down since around 2014, when body worn cameras really splashed onto the scene with national headlines. A lot of, a lot of legislative, legislative issues have passed defining, further defining what public records, what constitutes public records as they regard police footage from body worn cameras. And, and the Ohio Collaborative for Law Enforcement Accreditation in the state of Ohio has a standard for body worn cameras. We're, we are now a Lexipol agency and have been for about three years. Lexipol provides a policy that's in line with the Ohio Collaborative for Law Enforcement Accreditation that addresses the central tenants of, of that accreditation process. And I'm certain if we became a body worn camera industry, we would adopt, you know, some semblance of the Lexipol policy that we pay for every year and, and would meet accreditation next year when it came time to, to certify. And so for all these reasons, I, I just thought Axon was the, the right choice. And so we've sought a quote, I have it here in front of me, it's a five-year project. And as the director indicated, we, I had requested, based on an estimate, I'd requested money for body worn cameras this year in the budget. I actually requested the, the, the budget amount, not based on this quote, but on a quote from three years ago. And it was only a few thousand dollars off in the estimate, so the prices haven't increased that much. And one of the things that I'm, I'm happy with, with Axon as well is that while we have currently 21, I guess it would be their second generation TASERS deployed, those are the X26Ps. And we've been a TASER, TASER agency since, I want to say around 2004. We have a certain credit built up with Axon for the TASER Assurance Program that we've been paying into annually. As we would buy certain TASERS, you can buy a five-year insurance program and at the end of those five years, there is a value that you would get a, a new TASER X26P without buying it. So it's kind of an investment program for the city of Athens to save a little money. So those contracts are starting to mature over the next four years where TASER has agreed to give us the, the, the value of those contracts and trade-in. And so this program not only includes the not yet released body worn three cameras, which is the top-of-line technology with image stabilization, which should assist in, in image capture tremendously over the, the current technology. This system also gives us credit for the, the current TASERS that we carry and allows us to upgrade them to the also not released TASER 7, which will be the top-of-the-line TASER model that comes with some distinct advantages. One of the things that, that it integrates into the, the TASER 7s are, will now come integrated with the camera system. And so that's another factor that we, we, we looked at when we asked for an Axon quote, is there technology to activate the cameras that comes with the TASER 7? Is there technology to activate the cameras that comes with the TASER seven and that you can add on to both vehicles and service weapons? And so for instance, if we buy, if we purchase 20 cameras, which is what this would allow, and 20 TASERS, and I have, let's say, five officers at the scene of a high-level incident, if any of those officers deploys a TASER and turns it on, it turns on all cameras in the area and activates them without officer action, it just automatically turns them on and captures the buffer. And I believe the buffer rate you can set up to nine minutes on these cameras to go back and capture nine minutes previous to the camera being activated. Okay? In this quote, it includes the TASER technology for that, that the buffer and the activation. Also, we asked for quotes for all of our marked vehicles so that if lights and siren are turned on in the vehicle, it automatically activates the cameras in any camera in the area. And then service weapon add-ons for the same activation. So what the TASER does is they will retrofit the agency and the officers with their holsters. They'll provide basically a magnetic switch, for lack of a better term. I don't actually know what the technology is, but I'm going to assume it's something akin to a magnetic switch on an alarm for a door or something like that. So any officer that draws their service weapon at the scene of a high-level incident and will activate all the cameras in the area. And that's something that I think is worth the investment. So there's a lot of automated technology along with the buffering. We've asked for 20 cameras simply because I have 18 currently assigned to patrol division. And if we were capable a year or two down the road of adding and hiring our 27th on field position, I would be able to put 20 people into patrol. And so 20 cameras seems like I could outfit every employee in patrol. And I think that's really honestly the best way to go. I don't, I don't think it would be wise to scale back camera deployments. Actually, I think if you're wearing a uniform and on patrol in the city of Athens, I think we're going to have a camera, everyone should have a camera. That way, we're guaranteed to capture what people, what the community want us to capture. And so I think it's a great quote. It's on par with what I predicted it to be. I think the long-term investment is, you know, obviously, it's $214,000 and $179 across five years. That's with our discounts and our credit for the TASERS that we currently have deployed. So there is, I guess, to enter in the contract, there is a long-term commitment that the city would be undertaking, certainly five years. My guess is, is that this would be a commitment beyond that to Axon or an agency or a business like Axon for the long-term deployment and use of body worn cameras in the city of Athens until the technology changes, until it's provided by satellites or whatever technology will come down to pass in 10 years, 15 years. Certainly, it will be a contract that will take me to retirement. So, you know, what will happen after that? But yeah. I think, I don't think I have anything else I could add, but I'd take questions.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it. Any questions? I have a few, but Councilmember Grace.
Thank you for the information. It sounds like a really impressive system. Especially like the activation of everyone in the vicinity when one is activated. So I appreciate your providing the detail. How long has Axon been a supplier of body worn cameras? Do you know?
You know, I don't know that I could give you an accurate answer. I could guess.
Okay.
I'm going to say about six years. I believe TASER acquired a body worn camera company and absorbed it into TASER and then just, I think they saw the industry headed in that direction, so they kind of became a body worn camera. And I'm guessing about six years.
Okay.
But it could be a lot longer than that. They just changed the name to Axon about two and a half years ago, three years ago. And I think that's when they got really focused on the camera system.
Yeah, I just kind of wondered as far as sort of their experience and reliability and, but it's good to know that other communities are using
Yeah.
the same system.
The reliability for the cameras specifically, I tell you, our TASERS have been very reliable and they have a stellar warranty program that we will get with these TASER sevens as well that prorates each year. And so if we damage a TASER in the field, we can buy a replacement less the prorate amount for the warranty, which was full coverage at the start of the warranty program. Now, the cameras themselves, we would be in this program paying for that TASER, or the camera assurance program that they provide. So if we damage a camera in the field under this contract, we send the damaged camera back, they send us a brand new one, and it's factored into the cost. So they also will provide us at least two backup cameras so that we're not without a camera unless we have more than two damaged cameras. At a time, we won't be without a camera while we're getting the broken camera replaced. So it's all factored in, but we should always be in cameras. Oh, and also, I guess it came to me, if you don't mind me interjecting a little extra information. Also, as the director had mentioned, we're paying for a software package with this system. And one of the nice things about this system is that, you know, it doesn't require us to buy expensive servers. They're estimating we'll use about four terabytes of data a year. I can tell you, we already have a four-terabyte data store for AVI that we collect, audio-video interchange files that we collect as a course of normal investigation. This system provides us unlimited storage for not only the body worn camera data that we will, they're estimating will be about four terabytes a year, but also it interfaces with our current records management system and allows us to upload all AVI, whether TASER or, I'm sorry, Axon collected it or not. If we go to like a Walmart and they have video surveillance that they provide us on a case, we can actually upload that AVI file into the system and they will store it and back it up for us. And they provide access to all the local prosecutors. So the county prosecutor and the city prosecutor will have their own logins for our system and can log in and retrieve the data for case disclosure, discovery, things like that. And they can do their own reviews right from the system. So it's a really robust system.
Yeah. Compared to taking a thumb drive and having an officer go off the street to take the thumb drive, take it to the prosecutor, and then there's not enough room on the thumb drive and, you know, so.
Because we're talking about evidence.
Yeah.
And it has to be secure.
That's right. We pay about $1,000 to $1,200 a year in thumb drives to take data back and forth through the county prosecutor's office. That's an estimate. And then the other thing, I guess I forgot to mention because I'm trying to move rapidly, is this package also includes the recertification and training materials for the officers each year, which also includes the cartridges. Right now, we pay around $1,500 to $2,000 a year for training cartridges. This system provides all that for us. And so the true cost to the city, you know, once we remove the expenses we already have, it's going to be a little less than the, you know, roughly $44,000 a year that they're asking for.
Thank you, chief. If I may interject, Councilmember Grace. It's obvious to me that you've done your due diligence on this and I sincerely appreciate that because this is no small discussion. This is a big deal. And we're talking about people's lives, we're talking about safety, we're talking about the welfare of our community and our officers. So thank you. I sincerely appreciate the work you've put into this. And I applaud that you engaged other chiefs in this discussion and followed their course. This is one of those cases where being deliberate in our actions may have paid off a little bit as well, too, by learning from the others in the area. So thank you. I think you've answered the question I had, which was regarding training. And if I'm hearing you correctly, that would be included with this package.
Yeah. It will provide, the training fees, costs, and materials, including the training cartridges, will be provided for those 20 officers. If we want to certify more than 20 officers, and we may, we can buy add-on training packages for moderate cost, minor cost, I would say. Certainly not any more than what we're paying for those 20 officers. And so we're, right now, we currently certify every officer in the department, which is 26 officers plus all of our reserve officers. We're going to scale that back because the cost to benefit ratio is going to change with their training certification requirements. So we're going to scale that back. I would say we'll probably end up certifying more than just 20 officers. We'll probably certify 25 to 28 officers. That would be a mix of full-time and reserve officers. And we'll just pay each year outside of the contract for whatever materials we need to do, you need, use to certify the 28, 27, 28 officers.
Thank you. Mr. Stone, were you going to add something as well? Okay. You know, something else, too, that, again, we're blessed with advances in technology because we're not talking about something cumbersome. I'm imagining this is something light, it's not going to add to fatigue. This is something that's efficient and small is my guess.
Yeah. What I've seen, they look about the size of a GoPro camera.
Okay.
About the weight, which is about three and a half ounces, though I could be wrong about that area. They come with magnetic mounts
Okay.
that attach to the officer's uniform so they can be moved around. We will actually deploy two cameras in the investigative unit as well. Until such time as we have patrol at 20, staff members will take the, will deploy 18 of those cameras in patrol and then we'll put two of those cameras in investigations. We have four investigators that go out in field on a regular basis. They'll be able to deploy those cameras to capture footage if they're doing knock and talks or serving search warrants, that kind of thing. And so that'll be beneficial for them as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next talking point in City Safety Services Committee is a discussion regarding critical infrastructure and the CD BG grant application. I believe our City Service Safety Director, Mr. Andy Stone, is going to address the talking points on this.
Sure. I'll talk very briefly on this. This is just a, seeking this body's approval again to apply for this grant that we were unsuccessful with the last time. This is the critical infrastructure grant. We've used this particular program for one other project and most specifically the Depot Street lift station, because that was a failing lift station that was critical to a fairly wide swath of our community. We made a strong case for that and we were funded. And this is, since we're going to be applying for, again, applying for de-wiring equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. And that de-wiring equipment is sorely needed in order to give us more flexibility in managing bio solids. So this is, this will be a $500,000 grant, which will be part of the cost, and we just need council authorization to apply again. We've gotten some guidance from the granting agency to say, you know, talk about it this way, include this, you know? So we're trying to make sure that we sell why it's important to the, not only us, but the wider region for the health and medical of the city, why it's a critical piece of infrastructure.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
No, this time, thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from the administration, I do appreciate the update on that. As you acknowledged, we have applied, I believe, you said, two times before previously, correct?
Yeah.
So hopefully, third time's a charm.
Yeah, third time's a charm, right? It's important.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the City Service Safety Committee. That then moves us forward in the agenda this evening to our Transportation Committee meeting, which is chaired by Councilmember Kotzis, and that is including Mr. Kotzis, Mr. McGee, and Mr. Crowell. Thank you, gentlemen. We have a handful of talking points this evening, and Mr. Kotzis is officially in charge.
A handful. I don't know what happened. We have eight topics to cover tonight, so.
Less than a dozen.
Yes. So what we'll do, actually, and we do have, actually, it's great. So this evening kicking off on the Transportation Committee, we have a presentation from Scott Winland, who's from the Athens Municipal Art Commission. And he is here to speak about the, I guess would be considered the second annual Uptown Art Event, which happened last August, I believe, on Union Street. Yes, please, Mr. Winland. I also wanted to mention that Carol Patterson is also here this evening and always thank you for attending, too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. I'm here on behalf of AMAC. And yes, we are seeking approval for a street closure for August 17th, which is a Saturday this year, for our Second Annual Community Arts and Music Festival on Union Street. So just like last year, we wouldn't really be changing much. We would be the same location. That's the corner of West Union to Court Street. We set up a stage on the Congress side, sorry, West Union and Congress. We set up a stage there and we have art vendors on the other half of the street, along with Stewart's Opera House, who would be selling beer and other refreshments. And on stage, we have a variety of different arts organizations represented and different kinds of performance art, poetry and theater and dance and music.
I'm getting this into my calendar here, the August 17th, right?
Yeah, that's Saturday. And I believe that's, I met with Ron Lucas and we deemed that as a kind of a clear date for the summer so far as far as city events go, I believe, still. The, I think, what was the last cruise-in is the weekend before, Bounty on the Bricks is the week before that, and OU moves in the following weekend. So it's the only Saturday, I believe. But yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're shooting for. So I don't have much else on that except for that, you know, last year's event went great. I was expecting something to go wrong, maybe at least rain or cancellations or someone being upset with something, and we weren't met with any problems. So I'm sure this year we'll be full of them. But no, it was, it was a successful event. I feel like I had, I'd never organized an event where we actually had live poetry on stage in the street. And I was a little concerned that that might be too slow and that that might not, you know, fly or go over well. And I was completely wrong there. It went great, it was fantastic. And this year, we're excited to have theater involved. So I'm kind of, I'm liking the fact that this isn't just a music and beer event that you see a lot of, this is a little bit more than that. It's nice. It's a nice event before the students, the bulk of the students come back to town. I don't know if you guys have heard any other feedback about the event, if council has it all.
No, I mean, myself personally, no. No, I think I wasn't in attendance. I did walk through and enjoyed some of the, some of the music acts in the evening there and I thought it was great. I thought the crowd was very nice and, you know, it didn't, it never seemed like there was any type of, you know, you can, you can have an event that's, that might be a little bit more beer-focused and this never really felt, it felt like that might have just been just an additional compliment to it, but it wasn't the.
Yeah, I agree. And that's kind of the point, you know?
So.
Oh, so more specifically, I should mention, the closure would be from 8:00 AM until approximately 10:00 PM. I think that's, last year, we had said nine and it spilled over a little bit, but we were given the leniency to just clean. So we should probably say safely 10.
Okay. Okay. And that's Saturday, August 17th.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Member McGee.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. I missed the thing last year and I'm sorry I did because I've heard wonderful things about it. I had been of the opinion that I might have been a better location at the next block over. And what I, my question to you was basically, I mean, have you considered that as an alternative? Just, and mainly in case of bad, whether it would provide you with the opportunity to perhaps, if a university was willing to allow tents to be placed in the area to protect the art?
Sure.
That was my only question. Again, I applaud you for doing this. I support it totally.
Thank you.
And part of that question would be, I mean, whether you would actually want to consider asking council to expand. asking council to expand it to cover both blocks as a option.
I think moving forward, it would be really exciting to see it grow. I think for now, I love the location because it's so picturesque. I'm sorry, it really comes down to that. If you're looking at a stage over the hill of West Union going down, it's beautiful. It's a perfect promotion for the city. It just looks great. And it's nice that there's, that's kind of thought of as an arts district in itself, that stretch of the street. So I feel like that, that works. I do think that if we were given the opportunity to grow, that we could take it a little further and go down that, that street for sure. I thought of that too. And I, I was wondering, has, has the city done anything on just that street? Like just that side of the street?
I think part of the international.
I was, I was wondering if the street there, yeah.
I think they do.
But, you know, regardless, I think, yeah, moving forward, that's a good point for sure.
Thank you, too.
Okay. Administration, any?
The administration generally supports any festivals and major events that we can have in the summer because of the economic benefit to the city during the period where the population is less. So it was a successful event last year and certainly we support it going forward again.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Yes, President Proton.
Thank you. I can just add that I know that this has been discussed thoroughly at the Municipal Arts Commission as well, and the blessing is there as Chair. Patterson is here in support as well. So thank you for your work there and for looking for creative endeavors to generate excitement in the summer. I personally like the intimacy of just the one block and prefer the simplicity to that. So the sun sets in the west, so that does offer a nice picturesque, as you acknowledge. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving, moving down the bullet points here, and actually, Mr. Winland made reference to this, the 2019 Cruisin schedule. This is coming up. This is additional, this is a, three additional street closures that are being requested. These are on Fridays. Fridays, the event actually kicks off at 5:30 PM, the first one being on June 7th. The second one is Friday, June, or I'm sorry, Friday, August 9th. And then the final one is September 20th. And so all three Fridays at 5:30 PM. This closure is from Court Street. It is Court Street between Washington and State Street. So it's a, just a one, one block, not impeding any other, any other traffic movement through the, through the Uptown area. I don't know how early the meters have to be bagged.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock is the, is the start time. And then the, I don't have the end date or the end time on the, on the event itself.
I believe it's nine.
Nine. And this is the same, same request that we have received in, in years past from, from this organization, which is the Plains Lion Club. So do we have any, any questions from committee? Yes?
Just one, I was just curious on the September date, whether that coincided with the university parents' weekend date. It might be close, if not coincident.
That I don't know. I did, I did check football, but then football's on Saturday. But being on Friday, I don't think we've ever really had much of a, of an impact, being that Friday, Friday evening. But that I don't know. I don't know if it's, if it's parents' weekend or not. Okay. I don't know if anybody else has any other questions about this one. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. Okay. The third, third point here tonight is ODOT is once again doing some more work within the city limits. So they're looking for a, an LPA agreement with the city. So once again, 100% of all work done by ODOT within the city is covered by ODOT. And they basically just need legislation in place for this work, which is, the US, it's on US 33, on the, it's going to be a bridge deck overlay project happening in this coming October. And it is on the, the bridge, the bridges on US 33 that go over East State Street. So that would be when the, where and when the project would be happening. And they're just looking for legislation on this, so I assume we'll, we'll just see that come forward starting on Monday. Any questions on that one? Okay. Fourth one, fourth point tonight, once again, the city is, is going for a Transportation Alternatives Program grant, a TAP grant. And this is in reference to Uptown Elements, and I believe administration can kind of comment on, on those, those pieces.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So the, the TAP program is what the city has used in the past for a variety of bike and pedestrian improvements. You know, it's not technically supposed to be used for streetscape per se, but because streetscape serves pedestrians and bicycles, it's appropriate to use it for that. Nelsonville Project that is just wrapping up right now around the Public Square used the same program to do that project for sidewalks and streetlights and such there. Historically, we've used the TAP program for bikeway improvements. Several of our bikeway and if not all of our bikeway, major bikeway projects have been either the TAP program or its predecessors. In this case, this is the same ask that we made last year and were unsuccessful for. So this is another year later. I think this is for 2022 or 2023 now, as far as the actual, I think it's 2023, the board here, actually. So we're a couple of years down the road, but this is for the cross streets in the Uptown area for bike and pedestrian and specifically sidewalk improvements. And so if you can imagine the, the West Union Street Improvements Project that we did a couple of years ago for just that one block that we just got done talking about, the art festival, something similar as far as that kind of cross street work on the other cross streets of the Uptown area. That's what's included in the, in the application.
Okay. And just to remind us then, that would be Washington and State Street and then the, the other side of Union Street.
Yeah, Washington, State, East Union, potentially President. And again, it's scalable based on how much money we get and what we decide ultimately we'll want to do.
Okay. All right. Yes?
Two questions. When would this take place as far as the improvements if we receive the money? And will it also cover parking sources for bikes?
To answer the first question, yes, 2023, I think, is the time that construction would occur. So we'd have to sell in state fiscal 2023, which is, you know, June of 2022 to, you know, that's the, that's the window when you'd have to sell it in that timeframe. Yes, it would include bike parking expansion, that was part of it. One, there was a, an active transportation study that we had done and it was funded through an effort with the Health Department. And the City of Athens went through Department of Transportation to have a study of the Uptown area done, an active transportation study. It was an initiative that the Health Department really spearheaded about a year, year and a half ago. I don't know, Peter, you were somewhat involved.
Oh, they all go together, but yes, you're correct.
But, but there were a number of recommendations that came out of that, that study. And it was a, it was a pretty thorough product. We asked not only for, you know, just, you know, kind of a real focused look at, at bike and pedestrian issues, but also to look at general market and land use in the Uptown area. And so we got a really good product out of Toolie Design Group a couple of years ago. And then that is a annex at, that, or appendix to the City Comprehensive Plan Update. So many of you and many of the folks in the audience have been working with Paul Loeb, the planner on Athens 2040, which is our Comprehensive Plan Update. And this active transportation, Uptown Active Transportation Study is an appendix where there's a series of recommendations in it that could be incorporated into this project. So I encourage you to take a look at that product and I can certainly share it with, I think I shared it with the council in the past when it got done, but I can, I can share it again.
Do we have any, yes, Member Butler?
Thank you. Would some of these talking points potentially come up on our street tour?
Good.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. That might be helpful. And am I correct in acknowledging that you're referring with the TAP program, you're referring to bump outs or an extension of the crosswalk to make the distance shorter?
Right.
So it'd sort of be a little bit of a beautification enhancement as well as a safety?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Accessibility, ADA accessibility. You know, we have some challenges and even though we have ramps, curb ramps in the Uptown area, you know, the road itself is already at a 6% grade or a 5% grade in some of the areas. So, you know, how do you make sure you're meeting your ADA requirements and this would help us do that as well?
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to make a point, just even the curb height varies so much that that can be, be quite a challenge just for, for the vehicles, you know, loading ADA, you know, having that transition is just not, it's not clean, but you know, we're, we're dealing with a 200-year-old piece of equipment up here. So every once in a while, it needs a little tune up, I guess. Okay.
It's not Kansas, it's not Platte.
Yeah. Okay. Any additional questions? We're good? Okay. All right. Then the next point this evening, annual paving. It is, it is time to, to start talking about that. So Safety Service Director Stone, if you can kind of give us the overhead view on this one.
So you're going to ask me for a list and I don't have it yet.
Okay.
Because the Engineering Public Works Department just recently started going through the annual pavement condition rating effort that they do. The list will absolutely be in place prior to the passage of the legislation. And certainly when we do the infrastructure tour, we'll have that available for council members. But we're asking for $750,000, $250,000 of which would be Ohio University streets that they will, that we will have to appropriate their money, basically, will be the flow through, but we'll include their streets in our bid and both of us achieve some economy of scale. That way, we were successful last year in bringing some Ohio University streets in our annual paving project. And because that, not only do we get a better price by having a larger amount, but they got a better price than they would otherwise pay. So it's been a successful collaborative in the past and we'd like to do that again. So $500,000 of city money from two different funds, probably the 572 Street Rehab Fund and probably the 226 Fund is the other allocation we're looking at, which is the Permissive Wheel Tax Fund and then, and then $250,000 from OU's money.
Okay. Sounds like another, another great partnership between the city and the university to, to meet some of these challenges that we have. I have one question about, and it may have been just in, in passing conversation with, with Engineer Hetty, that he was looking into maybe some different, different treatments on, on some of the streets that don't necessarily necessitate a, a full repaving, but something that might prolong that, that process? Is that something he's still looking into?
So, you know, asphalt has a, has a shelf life, right? I mean, when you, when you repave, you buy time on condition of roadways. That's, that's what you're always, always doing. And so we've targeted our approach in recent years to, you know, streets that need to pave, we pave, streets that need sealed, we do crack sealing. Before I started, actually, in the first few years that I worked for the city in the mid 2000s, the city did quite a bit more, what was called at the time, micro-surfacing, which is kind of a full width seal. It's not unlike what, like a commercial-grade version of what you might do to your driveway, where you go and seal your driveway to try to preserve the asphalt for a longer period of time. What we found was some of that in the, in the, in the late 2000s and early 2010s, the costs associated with that versus asphalt were comparable. So what we basically, we got away from doing any of that, that, that sealing from a preservation perspective, just said, hey, if we're going to, if we're going to cover the whole thing, we'll just go ahead and pave it. Because, you know, then you get some structure with the asphalt paving. What we found is as ODOT has started doing more and more sealing, as a pavement preservation perspective, some of those costs relative to full paving have gone back down. And so we think we can, we can buy time on a lot of our local streets, especially with that particular treatment versus maybe the traditional crack seal that we've done where you just go out and hit the cracks. And so it'll be a street-by-street decision, basically, and then we'll look at the, the money we have and some of them will get traditional crack seals, some might get that full width sealing, whether it be a, a micro-surfacing or some other type of newer technique and then, and then the, the standard asphalt overlay as appropriate.
All right. Member McGee?
Thank you, Member Kotzis. Just a quick thing, I'd like to thank you for what you're doing because I know you do a good job at it. I also wanted to emphasize, I think some of the student neighborhood streets are in pretty deplorable condition and I, I'm not sure whether they would fall into the category of the combination university-city partnership, but I, I would hope that when the city makes its list of streets to be taken care of, that some of those streets would be considered because I sometimes fear that they don't get as much attention as they should. So thank you.
You know, when we do the annual condition rating, we look at every street that the city owns and we, and we rate it. Now, it would not be inaccurate to say that full-time, year-round residents who are old like us complain more about the condition of the street versus the, you know, the 18-year-old that, that lives on the street, they may not think too much about it. And so they don't, they don't complain as much per se. But we do look at every street that the city owns and if there's a specific location you want us to put some extra attention to, by all means, we'll, we'll take a look at that and incorporate that.
Thank you.
Member Crowell?
You, you talk about streets that the city owns, and I think I learned recently, probably from, from Mr. Stone himself, that the alleyways in the Uptown area are not their private
There are a couple that are public. Portions of Rose Alley and Fern Alley are public, but the balance for the most part, other than maybe a, a small section and a couple of the ones in the center, I think one of the center blocks are, are private property, yes.
So I think that the mayor indicated that there was some cold mix going into fix. I, I think the alley next to Cantner Hall is in particularly poor shape and that would not be part of the evaluation?
That alley belongs to Ohio University.
So they could choose to have it be part of their.
Choose to include it if that, if that in their designation of priorities would like to, to repair that one, that's the one that certainly they could, they could include.
Thank you.
I believe we have a, have a question from the audience too, or a comment.
Shouldn't miss it. Anything here for this?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll do that in a second. So two things. One, first, I'd like to suggest that as part of the repaving, the city should consider looking at the Bike Ped Master Plan to see if any of the streets were considering repaving or streets where bicycling facilities could be added by just changing the paint or otherwise restriping the roads to improve them in some other ways to, you know, help address complete streets through the repaving process. That's one of those sort of low-hanging fruit for a complete streets policy, which we don't have in place yet, but I like to think that we're forward-thinking here and are looking at those kind of opportunities to improve our roads for multimodal use without having to do big expenditures. And this is a perfect opportunity to do that. I like to suggest that. The other thing, I think from a previous council meeting, Engineer Hetty had said that there was, he thought $900,000 in paving money this year, repaving money this year. Maybe it's multiple funds, so he might have been referring to different pots of money than you were referring to. But you mentioned $500,000 for this project, so there's a difference there, about $400,000. I was wondering if that's money that is being held for something next year, like the pedestrian passageway project potentially, or if there's some other use for those funds. I'm not allowed to address directly, all right? Do I have to address council? Member Kotzis?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't actually know the actual.
I don't know. It's not a council meeting, it's a committee meeting, it might be different. I'm not sure the protocol here.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be preferable at the moment, thank you. Okay, so, so I'm asking.
Asking, okay.
The committee, I guess.
And that's something?
That you might look into that. So there's $500,000 of funding mentioned here. There's a difference between what was said at a previous meeting. I don't know what that $400,000, maybe it didn't exist. Maybe that's an error. Maybe it's, maybe it's being held for something else. Maybe, for example, for a project for next year, like the, if it can be held over for the pedestrian passageway project. But I might add that I think it would be important to use that money for improving our streets now if it's available. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other, any other questions after that?
I'll just add.
All right.
Yeah, I'll just add, thank you, that one of the things that impressed me about Mr. Stone when he had his previous title with, as the Public Works Director, was in 11 years ago when he, when I attended my first street tour, and he had a methodology in place of determining what streets need to be, you know, the attention need to be directed to, and doing the most he could with what little we had. Thank you.
And, and, you know, and actually, just one, you know, this is one, just one more point. I, my understanding is that, that the bike infrastructure is only going to exist on our major roadways. And this, and any, and none of this paving, annual paving usually covers any of those type of systems. Is that, I mean, is that, is that correct? Am I?
You could. So we could spend every dollar we bring in locally on a major roadway, major arterial, and not seek any external funds. And then we would pave a lot less lane miles. So what we've successfully done over the last 15, 20 years is we've applied for external funding, specifically federal highway money through the Ohio Department of Transportation, to do major projects in our arterials and leverage those, those federal gas tax revenues to bring tens of millions of dollars into the city that otherwise we wouldn't have done because we took a portion of our local revenue and put towards the required match necessary to do those projects. So to your question about, do we use annual paving money on local streets? Primarily, yes, because our arterials, we often look to do a, a larger project. Number one, because it costs a lot.
Yeah.
You know, East State Street, the two miles of the five-lane portion of East State Street is a year and a half's worth of city revenue if that's all we did to pave the wide, the wide portion of, of, of East State Street. So if we didn't go and find some sort of external funding source to partner our, our limited local funds with, we wouldn't be able to do that. So in general, when we do annual paving, we don't do larger projects because, number one, it's not grant-funded, it's all our own local money. And number two, local streets, in many cases, don't compete for external money. So it's kind of a, there's kind of an art to it. You know, you have to look at what external money is out there, what type of project competes for that. And then, and say, okay, I think we can do that. And we'll take this amount of our local money and, 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 and leverage it in order to meet the match required for that. And there was a, an exception to that last year because we actually did use some external money for our annual paving project, and that was issue one money. And the reason we did that is because we did an arterial. And that arterial specifically was Richland Avenue, south of, south of Curliciel Drive. So we're able to compete for that external fund.
Great. Thank you so much for the clarification. That, that helps a lot. Okay. Next, next item on Transportation Committee, I can't speak to. It's the Stimson Avenue Improvement Project, number 315. So, Member McGee?
Well, I would rely on the administration to enlighten us as to what this particular issue would be.
Right. So a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago or so, when we started design work, go ahead. I'm sorry. Or last year, when we started the design work for this project, we authorized phase one of design, which basically took us through alternative selection and all the preliminary engineering and the stage one plans. Now we're authorizing, we're seeking to authorize and appropriate the money for the second half of the design for the Stimson project now that we've selected an alternative. The reason we did it that way was because we, we knew that the, there were a variety of different end products that we could land on with going through the public participation process and the alternative development and selection process for, for Stimson. And we, we didn't think we could nail down, we thought we'd get a better price from the design firm if we didn't ask them to give us a, a cost proposal on the entire design before we were going through that alternative selection process and that preliminary engineering. Of note, this additional appropriation will include money for right-of-way acquisition as needed in order to do the alternative that we, we selected.
I have two questions then. You had indicated, I, I think, to council by email that the approximate cost of the design is $500,000. Is, is that right?
Well, yeah, about $500,000 plus there's money for right-of-way acquisition as well. So I think the total amount will be close to $600,000. Now, if we don't have to acquire that right-of-way, hopefully, it, it won't cost that much. But, you know, we're asking to be prepared to do that.
And that includes, it's not the extra $200,000 that has already been appropriated?
That was already.
Is that right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And this project itself is not scheduled to start until what date approximately?
Next year.
Next year? When next year?
I, I'll have to go back and look at the, this one is going to be interesting on how we phase it because of the different external funding sources that we use. A small city is, is, is paying $2 million of construction cost, and that's one of the external funding sources. Another one is state issue one that we're going to apply for, but that's not able to be expended prior to July 1st. And that's a $500,000 external funding source. So we, we might end up starting different parts of it at different times in, in the year. Like, we may, we may do some in the spring, but then bid another portion later. And I'd have to get the specifics, but I'll, I'll get that in advance of next week so that you have a templated schedule to talk about.
And I, I think you've indicated that the city's share at this point in time is approximately 2 million. Is that right?
I don't, you know, it doesn't have to be for construction. I don't have a final cost estimate. So we have to have at least 20% out of that full amount. Now, if I have a full cost estimate, you know, like I said, we've got about 2.5 million, or we expect to have 2.5 million in external funds. And we have to commit 20%. So, do the quick math on it. It's about $500,000 at least locally. Now, I anticipate the whole thing will be more than $3 million, so. But I have not seen that final, that final cost estimate design.
When you say 3 million, that's for the project, not the city's share, though, right?
Correct. It's for the full construction cost. Right.
Thank you.
Councilman Crowell?
Councilman Crowell, yeah.
Thank you, Member McGee.
I would just say, for the public, we received designs for the, for the accepted alternative of this project. For those who attended open houses or saw some of the sort of original documents, the, the shared use path is no longer part of this project. But that's really, as I understand it, the city administration's been very communicative with me on this. That's really semantics. I mean, there will be a wider sidewalk, an eight-foot sidewalk from East State Street to Cornwell, including a four-and-a-half-foot buffer from the, the traffic lanes. So bicyclists who, I know that Member Grace has talked about her children coming from North Congress and being able to access the bike path and, and having a safe route down Stimson Avenue to the bike path. That wider, while not technically a definition, shared youth path, youths path, that wider sidewalk with the buffer zone away from the traffic should allow more inexperienced bicyclists or, or children bicyclists to feel safe traveling down. It also means that there will be sidewalks on each side of the, of the road, north and south, with that wider on the, on the south side of Stimson Avenue. And it should provide that accessibility both for bicyclists, ADA issues, strollers. So not technically a shared use path, but one that should effectively serve as, as one for the, for that corridor.
Thank you. Member Crowell?
Yeah. A shared use path, if you're, if you're using the definitions under ODOT Design Guidelines, has to be 10 feet wide. And we can't bid a 10-foot-wide one. Plus, there was some initial feedback that thought something that wide might actually end up being problematic. So as part of the public involvement process. So we think that an eight-and-a-half-foot-wide walk will serve the, the same purpose and, and meet the, the goals. We really think that, you know, in, in an effort to, to, to work towards complete streets, that this is going to be a massive improvement. You know, Stimson Avenue for an arterial has one of the narrowest right-aways in the, in the city. And I think the reason for that was when it was built, you know, the, the first half was built, it was, they just said, this is all we need, and this is, this is what we're going to have. And then there's face-to-face building, you know, right there. So short of, you know, buying a building to widen the right-of-way, we're working within, you know, relatively narrow right-of-way for an arterial. And we think these improvements are going to be, you know, really significant for the users of the corridor. You know, we're in hard negotiations with the, the power company to, to remove their facilities. You know, there's a, they have a right to be there because it's a public right-of-way. We have a right to tell them to move if their facilities are in conflict with a public purpose. So, you know, we, we don't have an answer yet. And, and we, with, from American Electric Power to say, yep, we're going to get everything out, completely out of the way because there's no way that we can fit in the, in this limited amount of space that, that we have left after we do the, the new, the new design. But that's some of the challenges of a little city dealing with a couple-billion-dollar company. But we'll, 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 we'll come to the table, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. And thank you for clarifying and updating. And for, in reference to facilities, I'm guessing part of that conversation are telephone poles or is that, what would be, what would be facilities?
Not just telephone poles, but, you know, tall, you know, high-voltage power lines.
Okay.
Which are power poles, which is, which is what, which is what is there right now. There's a fairly significant feed that feeds a significant portion of the east side neighborhood, as well as all the businesses on Stimson Avenue that, that goes along that, that right-of-way.
And there's benefits, obviously, beyond, bearing them can, can serve many beneficial purposes, is my understanding.
Yeah. And, and, you know, one of the challenges, you know, the, I've learned a lot about right-of-way law, right? As we, as we did right-of-way legislation and I've worked with utility companies, is Ohio law gives utility companies the rights to use the right-of-way. And the only way you can make a move, whether they're overhead or underground or whatever, is if they're in the way of a public endeavor. You can't make them go underground if they're already aerial unless they, there's absolutely no other way for them to run their utilities in that right-of-way without going underground. And then it's a fight about who pays the cost difference for going underground. Some of the cost difference really comes from ground-mounted transformers versus aerial transformers. So if you can imagine them, and, and I don't want to get into all the gory details of this, but if you can imagine every business on Richland, or on Stimson Avenue that, that draws power from that, those, those transformers on those, those poles has a, a utility service that comes into the side of their building up, up top. If you do a ground-mounted transformer for ground-mounted lines, that power then needs to come and come into the bottom of their building and come up in the building a different way and, and do construction on, on their site. So the costs escalate pretty, pretty quickly when you, when you do something like that, not only for the, the utility company in the city, but also for the private property owner, specifically if it deals with something with power inside their building. So that's why it's a little bit more complicated than just go get underground to the, to the electric company. So we're, we're working through that. And that's some of the, some of these, these expensive design costs that you're adding money for is to be able to deal with.
Thank you.
Those specific issues on a, on a, on a lot-by-lot basis.
My understanding, too, is that you're exploring some options for fiber optic cable as well underground?
Right. So we've made it a kind of a standing policy when we do a, a major roadway project and we open up the roadway that we put conduit in. We've done that in several different other roadways. This will be another one that, that we do that. And, and, you know, it is a, it is a huge goal of mine to get a city fiber optic network that, that we own and control and use for facilitating economic development, for our own communications in between traffic signals and our own city buildings and, 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 and who knows what new, maybe driverless cars, you never know, would be used, would utilize the, the data that would go on such a, such a network. So we're not there yet, other than having the policy of putting conduit in when we open up the roadway so we're ready to accept fiber optic, city-owned fiber optic when, when the time comes.
Thank you. Any other comments by council? Any comments by the public?
I didn't see who I was for. I'm Rob Delak. Got 124 more of St. Avenue. I just realized that. So jackpot today. I get to speak twice. Wow. So, Councilmember Crowell, thanks for clarifying that point about the shared-use path and the details about that because I was too concerned, also concerned about that when I saw it. And it sounded like there wasn't going to be a shared-use path anymore. But then I did realize that issue, that it had to be a certain width to be officially called a shared-use path, and there was not the ability to do that. The one thing I am a little concerned about, though, is the safety for people using that path on a bicycle if it's not designed adequately for that purpose. So, for example, if it's just a sidewalk, there's not a good delineation of that space on a driveway when somebody is going to cross that in a car. There's legally supposed to stop before they cross the sidewalk, but pretty much nobody does that. So one of the design things you could do here would be to make it so there's a different texture or a continuous surface for the path as, instead of breaking it up for the driveway and having the driveway be the continuous surface. So just a slight design change, but it's something that signals to the person in the car that there's something coming up here I need to pay attention to. And you could also then, at busy parking lots, potentially put a stop sign and a line so they know that they're supposed to stop there before they cross. That, those kind of mechanisms in place would make it significantly safer for bicycles in particular who travel faster than pedestrians. So pedestrian, typically, the driver coming out may be able to see them. But a bicycle traveling faster, they have to actually stop to be able to see them before they would hit them. So the speed difference with bicycles and pedestrians really requires a different design, I think, in this case in particular. So it's something that was talked about in the design, the planning meetings and design meetings, the public meetings that, that the city had. I attended at least three of those. And those discussions came up every time. But I haven't heard if those are things that are still being included in the new design or not, or if it is reverting to just a sidewalk design. So I'm curious about those things. I'll be talking to the Engineering Public Works Department about them, but haven't heard any, haven't tried to do that yet and haven't heard any feedback on that. So something I think you should be concerned about and take a look at with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Delak. Any other questions or comments? Turn it over to Chairman Cottis.
All right. I'm, I'm back. All right. This is the next-to-last bullet point tonight in this marathon session. Parking garage interior enhancements. If we remember back to 2015, actually back when both Member McGee and I were still pretty new to council, we had a, we had a bond go out on the, on the parking garage for $2 million. That was just for structural improvements to keep the, to keep the asset running for the next, you know, 20, 25 years. So this, this is actually, this is just interior enhancements. And I was able to attend a, a meeting today to, to kind of hear a little bit about this. But I would like to still turn this over to Safety Service Director Andy Stone to kind of go into more detail about it than I can. Thank you.
So the parking garage was built late 1960s.
Wow.
Probably 1970, right around 1970, that timeframe. And, and the, the project from several years ago was, was almost purely a structural enhancement project, or not enhancement, a repair in order to, to keep this asset going. And we did take a loan at that time, and we've been paying on that loan. And we'll continue to pay on that loan until the, the bond's expired. That project also included elevator upgrades. So probably nobody's seen the, the elevator mechanical room below the elevators in the parking garage, but it's, it would look like a museum. parking garage, but it's, it would look like a museum prior to that project, because it was like 1960s elevator technology down there that was still running those elevators. So, you're going to ask me, "Why are we doing another parking garage project? We just did one." Well, the reason is that this project that we're seeking to do now is really for the look of the park, and functionality of the parking garage. So, it has three major components, and I'll put the plans on, once we get the corrections made from some of the staff input and Member Katsas' input today with the architect on a file share, so that council can look at it in detail. But it is primarily a lighting project and replaces all of the compact fluorescent lights that, believe it or not, we did 10 years ago with the energy efficiency study, and now, yeah, it's been that long, yeah, that we did those compact fluorescent lights with LED. So, not only will they save even more money from an electric perspective, but they'll be twice as bright. One of the most significant comments we get from the public is, "I don't park in the parking garage because it's too dark." And this will remedy that for all the floors. So, that's a significant component of it. A second significant component of it is completely overhauling the signage package inside and color coding the floors, so no longer will there be a one lower and one upper and two lower and two upper, but there'll be a yellow floor or a green floor. And then, the numbering will correspond, all the spaces will correspond, the elevators will correspond, and from a guidance and a wayfinding perspective, that will be included. There'll be major changes to the external signage also, so that if you drive to a lot of cities and you see a parking garage, you see that giant circle with a P in it, right? And that's indicative of there being public parking. We don't have that here. And many people come and they say, "Well, I thought that was for city employees, because it says municipal parking garage." And so, they don't park there and don't use it. Included on that large external sign with the big P will be a space counter, so it'll let you know how many spaces are remaining inside the garage. And then, another significant improvement, and it's beyond the signage, is painting that will correspond, the color codes, and you'll see that when you look at the plan set, you know, a significant amount of painting inside. And then, lastly, the opening up of the stairwells. So, the stairwells are the other major complaint about the parking garage, that they're scary. People don't want to walk in the stairwells, because they go into them at nighttime, and they're closed off, and they're scared, and they smell bad, because people pee in them. And so, what this project will do will be to remove all the doors and remove all of the non-load-bearing cinder block walls. So, if you go into a modern parking garage, you, the stairs are not a separate, you know, funnel to go up and down, or column to go up and down, they're just kind of part of the thing, and it's open to the parking area, and this will do that as well. And we thought that this was the best, that was an old code, and we thought that this will, this will be the best way to, number one, make it feel safer, number two, dissuade some of the urination that occurs in the stairwell. We think we will do this as two contracts. The signage contract will be one, because that's kind of a specialized thing, and if we just lumped it all into one contract, the general contractor would just, you know, go find a signage contractor and then mark it up 18% for what they submitted. And the signage contract is a real specialized thing, and that also has some longer lead time. So, we think we would like to do that one as one project, and then the remaining work as the other project. We think this is about a $600,000 endeavor. We think between money that's in the parking garage fund right now and money that will come in, we'll be able to go ahead and take the whole apple at one time and still continue to make the debt payment on the bond that we put in place a few years ago, and continue to operate the parking garage going forward. I'm making that on conservative estimates of the existing amount of revenue that comes in the parking garage continuing to come in in future years. There is some belief that, once these improvements are made, that the parking garage will be used more, and the revenue will go up, but I'm not counting on that for our projections.
You know, and the, I think the only other thing we want to remember here is that with this type of work, if it was to be performed on the garage, there would be some series of closures during, and what's the timeline again? Is it before October was our deadline?
Yeah, I'm really, I want to, I want to get it done by Halloween. I really do. You know, we'll look at how bids go, and we're a little late in the season right now, so my fear would be that contractors all have plenty of work, and they're not interested in bidding, so I might not be successful in getting good bids that can get it done by Halloween, but I'd like to try. And so, during the summertime, there might be a couple periods, particularly with painting the ceiling, you know, you might have to close a floor, because you don't want to drip on cars, or if you're the lane, you know, you don't want to drip on cars, obviously. But we would write that into the contract that they needed to do it, and have a restricted amount of time, not, you know, week upon week.
So, my family has, back in eastern Pennsylvania, has an industrial paint company, and my father used to be employed in the summertime to clean the vehicles that got the overspray, so we could call him back up and see what happened. Do we have any other questions, Member Crowell?
I think it's a great idea to enhance that outside signage for the parking garage, including that "how many spots are open right now" sign, which we've seen in other cities. Is that expensive from a technological, is there some kind of, how does the parking garage know if there's a car parked in a space or not?
There's a sensor at the, where you go in and where you go out. So, you know, there's 600 spaces, or however many are in there, and then it, for every car that goes in, it decreases the total number by that, and then for every car that goes out, it increases the total.
Oh, just at the front?
Yeah.
Not at every space?
Correct.
Oh, much cheaper than I would have.
Yes, much cheaper.
Okay, great. My other question was, we've seen a lot of interesting ideas connected to the essence of Athens. Will any of that be incorporated in the?
Yeah, you know, the design documents don't have, don't have the photographic project shown, because the photographic project, you know, winning and the installation happened after they had taken their original images, and so they're not reflected in the design documents. But obviously, that space will still be available for public art, you know, in future installations. Take a look at the plan set when it comes out. There is an opportunity, particularly with the color scheme in the vicinity of the elevators, to do some, I guess I wouldn't call it watermark, but background images out of the essence of Athens. And there's some ideas already incorporated into that, out of the Essence of Athens book, and so that's something that we'd like to see. I think Member Katsas could probably describe some of it. You saw some of it today.
Yes, yeah, it was, so at every level, the, around the elevators, they were coated in the color of the level.
Right.
But there were images that are specific to, you know, that are, when you think of Athens, you think of the courthouse or the college green.
Right.
And so, each level kind of has a different picture, you know, by those elevator doors.
I thought I saw some, you know, designs that really covered the outside, not just the street level, but the floors going up with maybe some kind of mesh.
That's probably a next project.
Next project.
I think that we can't afford that.
I didn't know how expensive that was. It looked cool, you know, it looked really Athens.
And this wouldn't preclude that, certainly. This is really an interior thing and then a signage thing. So, absolutely, in the future, if that's something that we want to do.
Thank you.
I would like to applaud you on your project, because I think it's well-deserved and well-needed. I do have one question. One of my concerns is when people are continually walking on the ramps, and it seems like it poses a potential dangerous situation, and I know we all do it, because it's so easy to do, and nobody wants to walk upstairs. But it's just something I would like to bring to your attention, and maybe it could be addressed, because, again, I think it's a safety issue. I've watched cars almost clip pedestrians a few times, and...
Because the stairs smell like pee.
Exactly. Okay, good, great. Well, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, this will help.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know that we can, I mean, other than signs to say, "Hey, don't walk on the ramp," but some people probably still will, but hopefully, they will be more apt to use the stairs after this project's done.
I would suggest some murals in there, so that people might be attracted to go up and see it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to just do one more, one other point, in that the, there is no upgrade to the meters. I know that we've been talking about meter upgrades. The parking garage meters were replaced, help me again, how many years ago was it? It was like four?
They're much more recent than the ones on the street. They're a different type of meter, because they're those multi-space ones where you press the button, and so at this point, we're not looking at replacing those meters.
Correct.
That's a, not really paid for yet. I mean, they are, but we haven't got a return on those.
On those yet, yeah. So, and you can still use an app with those and coin, but not credit card?
The project will include new change machines at locations other than where the current change machine is. There'll actually be two. Right now, it's problematic, because when you pull in, sometimes if you're trying to get change, you block other people pulling in. This actually will put two change machines at either end, and so you have to get out of your car, go to it, get the change, go back to the, if you need change.
Okay. Any additional questions? Are we, okay. And now, we're down to the last point this evening. This is the ODOT, the annual ODOT contract for RoadSalt. And so, this is a, an opportunity to participate in a statewide bid. And if, Andy, if you could please speak to this again, too?
Absolutely. It's a statewide purchasing program. We started, Athens didn't participate for a number of years. The county did their own bid. When the county engineer changed several years ago, the former county engineer, the new county engineer decided he wasn't going to do a countywide bid anymore, so he would just participate in the ODOT statewide bid. And we had to have legislation to participate in it. Every year, they send us the legislation around this time, and usually, they say, "Send it back next week." So, we don't have time to go through all the normal readings, but it's not quite that quick, but it'll be quicker than a regular number of readings. And we've been successful in getting good result prices as participating in this statewide bid.
All right. Do we have any questions on that? No? Okay. Well, with that, I'm going to say Transportation Committee is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Katsas. This leads us to the part of the agenda where we are wrapping up with Planning and Development Committee. I believe that Councilman Reisner is covering for Councilmember Fall this evening. This committee also includes Councilmember McGee and Councilmember Grace. It's hard to believe that it's been 10 years since Perfection Group made those.
Yeah, and unfortunately, LED technology just didn't make sense back then, because it wasn't quite advanced enough.
Yeah.
And we did compact fluorescents, but, you know, now LED is really the way to...
Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President Protem. Planning and Development Committee only has two bullet points. E-scooter slash bicycles regulations and property on North Blackburn Road for Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority. I'll confess right now, I know absolutely nothing about e-scooters. In fact, I didn't even know that things existed until last week. I'll turn to the administration to tell me what kind of regulations you want to regulate for whatever these things are.
Yeah, so, you know, to be clear, it's beyond just the scooters. Some of you have traveled to central Ohio, Columbus, you've seen the Bird scooters, the Lime scooters, there's a few other companies that do them around the country. And what these regulations are aren't specific to the actual scooters themselves, or, in this case, bikes, you know, but to companies that use our rights-of-way for both docked and dockless transportation of small vehicles. And so, you know, you have the horror story of a scooter company coming and dropping off 400 scooters just all over your streets, and then all of a sudden, they're there. And what this, these regulations do is create a structure under which those companies would operate in Athens. It would be a modification of the traffic code, so it would be, rather than a standalone ordinance, it would be a modification to Title VII, and I think it would end up being Title VII-10. Paul Logan and I have worked on this legislation. I think Member Crowell might have some thoughts on it. I know he's looked, from a university perspective and his other job as well, at, you know, some best practices. And so, ultimately, what this will do will require companies to register, we'll talk about the fees they pay per vehicle, talk about, like, having 24-hour contact available, talk about how they can't block certain areas. And probably the most important thing, I think, for, what I really would like some feedback from everybody on is, when you look at the legislation that we've put forward, what's appropriate from a fee perspective? And I don't know, you know, what I guess everybody thinks is appropriate to come in. And it's not just for scooters, it would be for, you know, if there were bikes, e-bikes that would come in as well. The one thing that we learned as we've kind of researched this is that, you know, these are becoming a lot more popular in a lot of places, and I think that it's a folly to say, "Well, we're not going to allow them," because I just think the movement is going in that direction. I think it's better to regulate the companies and have good actors participating in your community, and then if you do have a problem in a particular, because they had to register, because they had to have a local point of contact, you call up that local point of contact and you go, "Hey, fix this. You can't do this anymore," as opposed to just, you know, trying to ban something because you think it's going to be bad. And so, that was not the tact that we took as we wrote this legislation. We took it more from the standpoint of, if you want to operate a company like this in our community, here's the method by which you would do it, and we'll do it under our traffic code.
Oh, by the public right-of-ways, do you mean the streets, or do you mean the sidewalks, or the parking spots, or what exactly are we talking about with the public right-of-way?
Yeah, so it's, if you look at the legislation, it talks about not operating on, not operating on sidewalks, but positioning, and being allowed to use sidewalks as a positioning, as long as they're not blocking the sidewalk of the stored vehicles, whether it be bikes or scooters, like in the stretch, I mean, everything's a court street, right, or the side streets up there, not necessarily in the space beside the building where everybody walks, but up against the curb where the meters are, where you don't block the sidewalks.
But then, it's blocking someone's car.
It might be, right. And that would be prohibited as well.
Well, how could you...
...in the block operation.
I'm just thinking here, all of Court Street is one big parking zone. I mean, it's parking, 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 right? Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. I mean, from one intersection to another, it's nothing but parking. So, you say, "Okay, I'm going to put all these scooters on the edge where I'm going to park my vehicle, and then Grandma wants to get out to go to CVS, and thump, 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 there's objects there, whatever these things are." Is that a problem?
Yes.
Okay, then how would you rectify that?
You would call the local contact that the company has to register with the city when they come to register in the city.
But Grandma's still stuck in the car. Hello? I'm just trying to work this thing out. You, okay.
I agree. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think they'll come in regardless, whether we pass this legislation or not. I think this legislation will give us a structure by which we can regulate them.
Member McGee?
Well, as somebody who's actually looking forward to the coming of these articles, I do have a question, though, concerning the partnership between the city and the university in dealing with this, because it would seem that most of the people who would be using it would be students, and whether the university is working with the city at all in trying to come up with some plan on this, because especially in where they'd be parked and where they'd be left, it would seem the university has the resources and the land that they could certainly have storage spaces made available. Have you consulted them?
Yeah, we've been in pretty, the lead part of the university, as far as, you know, thinking about all of this, has really gone through transportation and parking. And so, through that office, we've shared our legislation and allowed them to comment on it. Probably the biggest, you know, we come at it from two different directions, right? Going for, you know, request for proposals to, if they wanted to, sole source or buy source with a couple of different companies, and just say, "Hey, you're the ones that are allowed to operate on this space here." City really can't do that.
Right.
We can't go and pick winner... We can't go and pick winners or losers when it, when it comes to doing this. We're just regulate how you, how you operate. But we think there are enough provisions in these proposed legislation to be able to correct bad actors. Here's an example. One of the things that's in there is, all of these devices have the ability to geofence areas and to where they, at least the electronic-powered ones, stop operating at, at regular speeds in particular areas. So we may have zones that may be a city zone, designated zone, or it might be a university-designated zone. The main green comes to example. If the university requests from the city of Athens, you know, we will draw a box around the main green so that electronic GPS devices can't drive through, or wouldn't be able to operate at full speed through that area. Columbus has done that in a couple of their parks, like right along the waterfront, where they think there's like large masses of people that will be in use, and they don't want people to, these things to go in, at a higher speed. So we think we could do the same thing here. Say we have a special event planned, and, you know, I don't know what that special event would be. You know, Halloween comes to mind.
President Obama.
President Obama's coming, what have you. This regulation would allow us to, with 21 days' notice, to the company, to any, any company that's registered in Athens, to geofence a particular zone so that they wouldn't be able to operate at full, at full speed in that particular zone. And so if the university asked us, because of a particular area is particularly sensitive, hey, we'd like to have this geofenced off from these vehicles at a certain time, this regulation would allow us to, to do it. And because they've registered, we actually have somebody to contact on it, so.
And have we addressed the bike path?
Yeah.
Because isn't there state legislation?
So this, yeah, so this, this, this legislation is silent on, on the bikeway. State law is changing and allows for, like, and it was a big story in the paper that recently, for e-bikes and, and e-scooters and such to travel on, on bikeways, designated bikeways, unless a locality decides otherwise. And so this legislation is silent on that.
Member Butler?
Thank you. I applaud the city for attempting to be forward-thinking on this and ahead of the game. Just a quick Google search indicates that the city of San Francisco had a cease and desist letter to three companies that had just plopped down their scooters, e-scooters into the community without permission, which led to a lot of problems and challenges. Portland, there's some comments and articles regarding Portland, Oregon also encountering some similar difficulties and challenges. So I do, they're probably coming, but we should be ahead of the game.
And one note is, like I said, this legislation speaks to more than e-scooters. That's what everybody imagines, is the little Bird or Lime, or whatever other company's scooters that you just zip on and go somewhere. But this speaks to, you know, any type of either docked or dockless transportation companies using the city as their space that they go and, and rent.
You're using the word dock and dockless. I, I have no idea what that means.
So dockless is, every night, people who are employed by the company that owns the vehicles, whether they be bikes, or scooters, or skateboards, or something out there, go around and use their GPS, and they find them. And then they take them to their house, they plug them in, they charge them up, and then in the morning before they go to work, they take them out and they put them in a spot, and they put three or four of them in a row, and like leave them there at that spot. And then that's the spot that they're available during the day for other users to have the GPS and go and, and find them. Those are dockless, because it's, that spot is just a, it's just a place somewhere. Docked would actually be a station where someone would come and say, hey, you know, I, I use, you know, XYZ bike rental, and mine had to stay in a, in a dock, and that dock charges it overnight. And they would come to the city and say, we want to put a dock in this area, and we'd look at the, the space and say, okay, you can put a dock in this area. And that would be a docked transportation. And we don't anticipate seeing much of that, I don't think, the docked stations. It seems like that is because the technology advancing so quickly with the dockless, and that, that business model seems to be working faster than the docked model. And I don't know if there's other people that have researched this that, that know otherwise, but it seems like most will be dockless. But perhaps there would be a company that would want to come and put docks.
Member Grace?
I, just when I was traveling with my, my teens last summer, visited a city along Lake Michigan where they had docked just bicycles. And we were, you know, you just put in your, your credit card information, rent the bikes, take them, and then return them to either the same dock where you checked them out, or a different dock, and you're, and it registers the, the time you used it and when you returned it, and, and charges you for that. I've never used the dockless, but I, like, like Member McGee, am, am looking forward, you know, hope that, that some of these do come to Athens. I, I think it's, it's great to have varied forms of transportation available to people, and perhaps the, the fewer people are inclined to think they need to drive cars everywhere. But I, I certainly applaud the efforts of having, having a plan and some, some policies in place before the system arrives. So thank you for that.
Oh, you want to speak? Oh, okay. I thought you were just waving at me.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Grace, too. Thank you.
Peter Katsis, Athens City Council. You know, and so the, I think the big thing that we need, that I, that I kind of grapple with is that these are businesses that are, that are operating within our right-ofway. And so, you know, is there, is there a cost, is there a cost associated with, you know, technically renting that space? Because every time they take one of these units and put it in the right-ofway, is it competing against, you know, other, other things that, that are there, that are necessary to be there? And so what you see, like in Columbus, where they just, you know, these companies just showed up at night and just, and just dropped them off, and then, and then their council and their planners and the city basically had to kind of retroactively try to figure out the process. I think, I think being in front of it in this, in this type of manner, just based on, on how many other cities our size are already starting to receive these, these units, I don't think that we're, we're not fully, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be here, and it's probably within this year. It could even be, you know, over the next, next few months. But, but if we have some rules in place, not only, not only for, you know, a proper usage of the, of the right-ofway, but also if we have specific rules. I've seen in some cities where they've, they've actually decided that a dock, so a dockless transportation versus a docked, a dockless, you can basically just ride it to your destination, and you just leave it there, and then somebody will find it on GPS, and, and, you know, they'll, they'll ride it from that spot. So like tonight, we could have seven of them sitting out in front of, you know, City Hall because we all, you know, we all came in on them. The, so that's, that's a little bit more exciting for the consumer, because they can take it straight to the destination, you know, and then they just have to go out and find one within a few blocks to, to go wherever they need to go. I think that the docked ones will, they're probably, they're, they're much more expensive in that you have to have, you have to work with, you know, with, with the city to, to install that type of infrastructure, and you, so you have to designate a space. The, the equipment itself was more, is more expensive, so basically, they get parked in there, and then, then you have to, you know, pay money to have them released. You have to return them to the same spot, so it's not as exciting for the consumer, because there, they have to take it back, they have to find a spot. And if they go and that, that station's all filled, then they have to ride somewhere else and park it somewhere else. So I, I see dockless as being, being at least at this point, the way forward. And that's where we need to kind of have that consideration of what, what's our city right-ofway worth to these companies who are coming in and pretty much setting up business on, on our street corners.
Well, that, that's a good point that you, you bring up, where you're, we have these outside businesses coming in, and they say, oh, oh, empty public right-ofway. I'm going to make money from that. Thank you very much. Can they do that now?
They're, they're doing that now.
But, but what legal basis do they, do they have to use the public right-ofway to do that? To set up a, a for-profit business using public infrastructure? How, how can you do that? I can't do that.
Taxi cab does. You could have a taxi cab.
Yeah, but a taxi cab has a space, and he's regulated. He, a taxi does, just doesn't go park any place he wants and just says, hey, here I am. We, we have places designated for...
It had to stop there, though. That's just a taxi stand that we've put there so that they have a place to loiter while they're waiting for rides.
Right.
You know, I mean, there are a lot of businesses that use the public way. Every, every tractor-trailer driver is a, is a business that uses the public right-ofway to deliver goods. You know, this is a business using the public right-ofway in Athens. I think that, to Member Katsis's point about thinking carefully about the fee we charge in order to register so that the, the citizens of Athens can recoup some of the costs associated with managing it, is probably where we should focus our attention as, as we go forward on this. And, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe it's something we don't want. Maybe we say, hey, they're banned, we're not doing it. But I think from a, you know, active transportation perspective, and the fact that we are trying to get people out of cars, that, that there is some value to doing it, and that we got to decide what's the, what's the, the public value of, of business getting to use it, and then how much should the citizens of Athens charge that business for using their space? And I think that's the discussion to have going forward. I didn't realize that we didn't have the proposed legislation on the council drive yet. I thought it was there. It will be there by tomorrow morning. So I'm sorry, David, that, I thought, I thought somebody else had gotten to you already.
Thank you. Member McGee?
I just wanted to also add that I hope the city would consider doing something to implement more bike racks, the kind of racks that can store these, to be placed all over so that if they do come, they would be placed in places that would be suitable rather than impediments. So that might just be something the city needs to consider, where could they be placed? And should we be placing them now? And then assessing the cost of that to the fee, as you'd say. Thank you.
Some of the, you know, as I've read, you know, this all happened pretty fast across the country, and, and as I've read about what some other communities have done, is they've identified locations in high-use areas and said, okay, this particular location is not necessarily in the way of anything. Perhaps it's in between two parking spaces. And they've actually painted zones, or had the company paint zones based on the, or maybe even just told the company, hey, this is, this is the spot you have to relocate these to every night, because it's the least of an impediment, least location for an impediment. So I, I agree with you, but that's definitely a thought. I'm figuring out who my staff is going to be the manager of these, because one more thing to do that they didn't have to do yesterday.
Member of the audience?
Boy, there it is again.
It's your lucky night.
And Rob Delak, 124 Morris Avenue. So this is a great idea. I love that the city's doing this, being proactive. I don't know if I know a single example I can think of, and I've been keeping up on the subject across the country, in a city that's been proactive in doing this. Every single time, the city's had to react to the scooters or bikes being dumped on them. So kudos to the city to, to doing something about this in advance of what might happen here. Even a city like Ox, Oxford? That's Merritt, Miami University, right?
Yeah, we don't say that.
Yeah, they don't say that here.
By the way, my son applied to go to school there, and here at OU, and he has chosen to go here at OU. But anyway, I don't address. So they just got dumped on this past year. They just, scooters dumped on the city, and the city was scrambling to figure out what to do. The university didn't want them on the university property, all sorts of problems. So great that we're doing something. Just a couple of comments about that. One is fees. I think, definitely think we should be charging fees. What we do with those fees is something we should think about, though. Can they be used for things like improving infrastructure? Adding bike racks, for example, where those bike, dockless bikes may be locked up? Putting bike lanes in. These vehicles would benefit from having bike lanes, and these companies have talked about, Bird in particular, talked about paying into the infrastructure for the city. So in other words, helping the city fund new bike lanes, because bike lanes are really micro-mobility, is the term for this now. So really, micro-mobility lanes, these vehicles can use them as well. So there's, I think, potential there if that money could be used for improving infrastructure. That might be a good use for some of that money. The other thing I want to make a point of, I didn't hear mention of data. So one of the things we need to make sure we ask for in this agreement, I think, is that they provide data so that it would be generalized data, so we don't know who the user is, but, so depersonalized, but we know origin and destination, and if they have GPS tracks, even that, so that we can make better management of the system to figure out where the usage is, if it's being equitably used, for example, if the scooters are getting to neighborhoods that really need them, et cetera. So we can better manage this from social justice perspective, as well as just better economics for the city. So.
I, I could speak to that. There's a whole section that, that's requiring a registered company to provide certain data, and I'd be interested in, in people's perspective when you, when you take a look at it. And again, I apologize for that. I thought, I thought this was on the show. I thought you, you won't have it tomorrow morning.
And one more, one more comment about data. I'd suggest with the word open in there, so the data is open to distribute to the public to use. For example, I've started up a, a group, just about to start a group of data analysts that would hopefully be getting together periodically to talk about what kind of data projects you're doing. And I'd like to see data, if it's available, could be used by these folks to, to analyze, come up with creative ways to use that data, and help the, the city better use that data, too. So this is something I've seen happen in Washington DC. All the data for taxis, metro, bike share, scooter share is all open data. And so there's groups that get together and have fun playing with that data and using it, and then making apps from it sometimes, or providing the data and the results to the city for improving the services. So, good stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, committee? Administration, audience? Okay, so tomorrow, we'll have the, the actual ordinance, we'll read it, and...
And, you know, we're not in a hurry, other than we think that it might come, so, and when it gets, when the weather gets nice. So I guess I would ask you, if you want to amend things, and you look at them, and, you know, return the first reading, say, hey, we want to change this and do that, I mean, this is really could be a, you know, we're not the smartest people in the world to come up with this, but Paul Logue is a pretty smart guy, and he's done quite a bit of research. And so I think it's a, you know, large enough to, to be comprehensive, but small enough to be manageable. And, but, but by all means, please take a cut at it based on what you think is appropriate to, to add or subtract.
Okay. Thank you. Last bullet point. 7055 slash 7065 North Blackburn Road, Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority. I assume this has to do with an idea to dispose of property that the city owns on Blackburn Road?
Okay. Yes. So there are two houses that the city owns right now on Blackburn Road, and I realize it sounds like this is a big deal to dispose of property, but, but they were purchased in the 90s, I believe, maybe the early 90s, as, as vacant lots, and then houses were built on them in order to serve the Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority. And they've ever since served and have been managed by the Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority. Really, the only thing that the city has in these two houses is, is we have the occasional maintenance of it, of them. There's, there's really no reason for the city to maintain these when the Metropolitan Housing Authority continues to do a good job and, and manages them, other than occasionally we have to take money out of the general fund to pay for maintenance, whereas if they were owned by the Metropolitan Housing Authority outright, they would be responsible for the maintenance.
We pay the taxes on that, too, don't we?
Pardon me?
The property taxes. That's our responsibility.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
That's a good point. So, so yeah, the, the thought is, there's two properties, we would, we would, we're not allowed to sell, Metropolitan Housing Authority is not allowed to buy two properties adjacent to one another. Our proposal here would be to sell one at market value, and then, and then donate the other one to the, to the Metropolitan Housing Authority as well. And basically, get out of the, get out of the housing, housing business on those two houses, allow them to manage and continue to manage it.
Question? Member McGee?
Did the city pay for the building of those houses?
I don't believe so, I don't believe so, I, I, I don't really, we've, we've tried to find the history of the situation, and, and it seems as though there was a need, and maybe the, the city was able to get it easier than the Housing Authority was, the, the land, in order to expand housing options for LMI folks that would be customers of the Metropolitan Housing Authority, and, and so, for whatever reason, we, we have four properties in the city that, that are in this category, and right now, the administration's position is the ones on North Blackburn are logical to just transfer, the other two will hang on for potential future, other use potentially, one of those is adjacent to West Elementary School, so knowing that West Elementary School changes could occur in, in future years, we feel like it's, doesn't make sense to transfer that property yet to the Metropolitan Housing Authority, the other one is on Richland Avenue, which is a business zone, and is adjacent to the, the fire station on Richland Avenue, and, and that one, we're not sure is appropriate to transfer to Metropolitan Housing Authority as well, because there may be other uses for the city in the future, but these two zoned are, there's no reason why they shouldn't always stay in the, in the Metropolitan Housing Authority's bailiwick.
If the house is sold, then does the city receive the, the money from the sale? Okay.
The one that sells at market rate, I think the mayor's plan would be to, to put that into the Athens Enhancement Fund, but he will remit it where we have to, it might have to do with, it, might have to go back and find out where we bought it, what money we used to buy the land, and, and have to put it back into that fund.
The clerk is indicating it was CD.
CDPG funds were used.
Were used to purchase some, might have to go back in the CDP fund, and we could use that for other, other things that are allowed.
Member Grace?
I would just like to add that, from thinking a lot recently about housing in, in Athens and affordable housing, that it, it makes sense for these properties to, to be under the ownership of the Metropolitan Housing Authority, that will make, make the management and maintenance of them more straightforward, I think, and also ensure that they remain in the market for low-income housing, so I think that's a great plan. If, if there is flexibility for what is done with, with the proceeds, I would like to, to see that some of that be earmarked towards future endeavors for the city with affordable housing, I, I think that would, that would be a wise use of.
I, I think that's the mayor's intent, I mean, obviously within the confines of, the CDPG would allow, by all means, absolutely.
Thank you.
Member Butler?
Thank you, just doing a quick Google search of the address, they're on the north side of North Blackburn, just above Kimes Road, and they both appear to have ample off-street parking as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Administration, audience? No, okay. Just checking. Well, with that, this committee's closed.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in this evening, both in person, on TV, and on the internet, we are adjourning on or around 7:34 PM, thank you, have a good evening, 9, sorry, 9:35.